And to the Republic for which your hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a special meeting to talk about the employment of Scott Jobs. And I hope we can keep it orderly. We need some time for everybody to talk and public comment. And I hope we can keep it quiet and civil. And that's all that we can talk about tonight. I will start off with the new business. In lieu of... I will try to do my best. Two Scott Jobs from the village of Elton.
Do you need to ask for a closed session?
Oh. Is Scott here? Is he? Scott, over here?
Scott?
He's there.
He's here.
Scott, open.
He's out here.
Ask if he wants a closed session. Scott, you're eligible for a closed session.
Do you want a closed session?
No. Okay. Okay. We feel a written warning should be issued versus termination. We hear you. It is based on the following reference. Village of Elton. Can everybody hear me now?
No.
Stand up.
Stand up.
Would it be better if Dan... Would you read it?
I can read this. We're just reading this.
Did you read it from here?
I can read the letter, yeah.
Sure.
We feel a written warning should be issued on the following reference. Village of Elton Employee Manual. Effective date... Can everybody hear me? Sorry. Okay. Effective date, December 11th, 2018. Page 16, Bullet 5. Number 1. Refusing to obey instructions. Has not signed police policy passed at 8:13 council meeting placed on desk for his signature 8:15. Page 16, Bullet 5 and 11. Engaging in behavior to create discord and harmony and refusing to obey instructions. Did not provide updated schedule with part-time help and previous approved overtime to police committees weeks beginning 8:25 and 9-8 after previously providing scheduled week beginning 8:11 to include part-time. Page Bullet 5 and 11. Insubordination engaging in behavior to create discord and lack of harmony. August 31st. Leaving Autumn Fest before 10:00 p.m. with a ride-along. He did not return to walk in or around entertainment tent. Only drove by, though it was stated that we needed some help in and around the entertainment tent, which is why overtime was approved to work a double shift that day since part-time help could not be found. Also not removing minors under the age of 21. That's the end of this written warning.
Can you make a motion? Put that in the form of motion.
Can I ask what date that minors...
No.
I'll second that.
You gotta wait till public comment, Tim.
Discussion.
Who first and who second that?
I have Randy Haley making the motion and seconded by Gail Schumber. Now we're at discussion by the village council.
I'll start off. We have a new police policy. It was passed on April... or excuse me, at 8:13 at the council meeting. It was placed on his desk for signature at 8:15. Have not received said document back at this point. Number 2. Engaging in... to create discord and harmony and refusing to obey instructions.
I think right there it should say "lack of harmony." According to... I think that's a pinning error.
A lot of people in there.
He's rereading each statement allowing council members to have a discussion.
What did you say to him?
I said number 2 that on the paper that we have in front of us, from the handbook, it should engage in behavior to create discord and lack of harmony. So it's a typing error.
Did not provide scheduling with part-time help and previous approval on overtime to police committees. We were receiving schedules from 8:25 to 9-8 after previously approving the 11th schedule.
After previously providing.
Yes. Don't comment on that.
I'm good with the way it's written.
Okay. Insubordination, behavior to create discord and lack of harmony, August 31st. Leaving August... leaving the Autumn Fest before 10 o'clock with a ride-along and did not return to around... to walk around or walk in or walk around entertainment tent. Only drove through in which stated we needed help, some help in around the entertainment tent, which is why overtime was approved to work the schedule to double shift that day. One of the biggest issues that went on at that point was having minors in the entertainment tent that were not removed, which is...
Were they removed or were they not removed? Because if I remember correctly, I think I did go in and remove them after being told to do so. And I think Mr. Zarkey was standing right there when I did it, if you want to confer with him.
There was some discussion about it and after Mr. Jobs conferred with a couple of the other people, indeed the minors that were in the beer tent, entertainment tent, so to speak, that were literally standing two foot inside the door having a conversation with myself and Mr. Jobs, they were removed.
Were they removed when they were first asked? When the staff there first asked to have them removed since they had a sign that said no one under 21 allowed?
There was some discussion prior to their removal.
And they were not removed at first?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
They were removed once Officer Jobs had an opportunity to talk.
After the community club member came to talk to me and I got done with our discussion, I did as they requested. Am I supposed to be rude and just walk away from these people when they're asking me or telling me what they want done?
The person...
After the communication was done, I went and did what they asked.
The person that confronted me told me that you said that they were there and they could stay.
Yeah, I hear you.
They... I... The person that confronted me told me that you said they could stay and she never said that they were removed.
You haven't ever dated?
Did you?
Yeah.
Who's the person?
Ours?
It's not yours.
Who's the person?
They can make a statement and they will.
Where's the person?
Keep it simple. I talked to the lady this morning in a long conversation. She never said anything about them ever being removed, all than... other than she was told by Scott that they were able to stay. And that's wrong. I mean, that's...
Okay. For one thing... Excuse me. For one thing, the Elton Community Club had their rules for a beer tent. That is what their rules are. Anybody who has a beer tent in any town has their rules. If they decide under 21 can come in, they slap on a wristband that says "under 21" so they're not served alcohol, that's fine. This particular club decided they did not want anyone under 21. So that is what they wanted enforced, was not anybody under 21. Did Scott do that after he was told? Yes. But that's after the discussion. That's all we're saying. That is what the reprimand is. That is it. They... He shouldn't have... They shouldn't have had to ask more than that.
It would just get through whatever we're gonna do.
Thank you.
I mean, but I have further comment on number 3.
Okay. Please.
So, not returning to the entertainment tent after 10 o'clock. I don't know how much I'm at liberty to say because I was on the ride-along with Officer Jobs. Okay. There was a traffic stop that took place on Whalen Street that occupied his time for nearly an hour and a half, I believe. There was two young gentlemen there that needed to be addressed, needed to be taken care of. Scott handled that manner in what I felt was a very fair and professional way. We're dealing with a couple of college kids starting their first week of college. The citations that they received were done in such a manner that they could go back to school and make their first day of class. He probably could have cited them with other things and possibly jeopardized at least one of their college sports careers. But instead, again, he handled it in what I felt to be appropriate. We had to wait for the parents to come pick the children up. After leaving then, I'm leaving there, I'm pretty sure there's some people in this room that were involved on North Main Street here. We were stopped. There was a report of a gentleman that had been missing for about two, three hours and his family was quite concerned about his well-being. He had left the entertainment tent possibly overconsumed and then came up here, fell asleep at the bar, was removed from the bar. Nobody knew where he went to. We then spent another hour plus checking the ditches at the northwest corner of town, checking alleys, checking train tracks, checking some backyard bonfires, checking campers and everything down at the park. So, yeah, he wasn't at the beer tent, but I'm pretty sure the two things that he handled that night were far more important than him standing down there when there was already eight or nine other people at that beer tent covering security.
I have no issue with that. That we left with the ride-along. Did you, in between your stuff, did you make another circle around it all to the beer tent?
We did drive through. We did not stop. He was in contact, though, with Mr. Cool, who was hired as private security for that event. And Mr. Cool did have contact with him, as well as I know there was several other people working the entertainment that night that had methodology to contact Scott should the need arise, including his own kids.
Thank you. No, no, thank you that they were in contact. That was the biggest concern was the fact that if he had enough time to circle, then he could have stopped and checked to make sure they were okay. But if he was in contact with the security that...
As well as...
The club... That the club had in there?
As well as two other sheriff's deputies that were in town, well, not in town, near town on an unrelated matter, also made an appearance down there, too.
Thank you very much for that information.
We can check off that reprimand, then, right? Then we don't count any more.
Right.
Only their job.
That's not the information that I received from several people. And so it's up to the council to draw that one.
I think we need to leave that the minors were not removed when they were initially asked. They were not. They were not. So, that's my opinion. I think that should be left in there, that part of it.
I disagree.
Don't you have to be asked to do something before you do it?
It's not public comment. Marlo.
It's not time for public comment.
Marlo, it's not public comment. Deputies?
Once more in your own. Any comment?
I think it should stay also.
Well, I guess my theory is if there's some... it's not clear exactly what happened, obviously this is different than what we were told. I think that if we're gonna make this stay, then we have to have a little more clarification of exactly what happened from... I mean, this is totally different than what I was told.
Well, number one, why didn't you get it? He asked.
It's hearsay. He should have known that was his job.
Maybe you should come and talk to me also. Instead of just taking one side, I would appreciate it.
I guess I'm referring to more not... because there's two parts of this.
Yeah, the first part I'm finding.
The first part is the not covering the beer tent. I was told that there was only two security people in that beer tent and those two left. This and I'm hearing there's 10, 15 of them.
I'm happy with that first part being taken out. I'm happy with that being taken out.
Can I ask a question of the audience? One of the audience members, please?
If it's not... I don't know. You'll have to ask Randy. That would be up to him.
Yeah. Paint into this issue.
Mr. Parrish, how many of these other security guards were in the entertainment tent that night?
Working security at that event, there were eight of us, not including the off-duty... well, the retired sheriff's department person that was there as our point of contact where we ran... where he was more of our point man on that. So there was at least eight of us there at the time moving in and out of the event. And I happened to be about 10 feet away from the incident that took place that everybody is discussing. Those individuals did come inside. They were up against the fence. And according to the special license for the Michigan Department of License and Registration Affairs for Liquor and Control Commissions, it says, one of the questions, can minors be in the licensed area? And the answer is yes. Minors may be allowed in the licensed area. We recommend the use of wristbands or some other identification tool to differentiate between minors and those of legal drinking age. All IDs should be checked to prevent serving to underage persons. So by the statute of the license, they were allowed inside. And from what we were told, that no one under the age of 21 can pass the tables where the wristbands were being issued.
There was no wristbands.
There were.
That was supposed to remind you.
Of course not. The wristbands were to allow the bartenders to identify people of legal drinking age. They were up against the fence.
The Elton Community Club posted no one under 21. That is their rule.
Agreed that that may be what the precedent is. But the controls...
But those are frequently asked questions that you're reading from? And that says common practices? That isn't actually the law right there, what you just read? That's under frequently asked questions about it?
These right here are...
Frequently asked questions?
That support the law. Now, again, they did not pass and they were only there a short amount.
That's not the point, though. The point was that from the Elton Community Club, what they stated and what I was there right there, what was done is that they said no one under 21. It was posted right there. We weren't seeing it. It said no one under 21. We're not trying to make a big deal about it. What was said. Anyways, the point is, that's just part of it. Ask the minors to leave and at first he did say no. Am I correct, Jeff?
You are correct. Again, there was some discussion as to whether or not it was a matter of law. And again, is it his responsibility to enforce rules that are outside of the laws of Michigan? Again, if my kids are climbing on the furniture at home, do I call him to enforce my rules? Or is his job to enforce the laws of the state of Michigan and the ordinance of the village of Elton?
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If someone at the bar in town, if the bar called you because they had asked somebody to leave that they didn't want in their bar because it was after 9:00 and it was a minor and you went up there and they asked... and you asked them to leave and they don't leave, do they... what would you do then? I mean, do they usually leave when you ask them to leave?
I've never had that issue.
You've never had to ask anyone to leave a bar?
Other than an intoxicated person that they let out. I've never had a minor in a bar.
So even an intoxicated person, when you ask them to leave, they leave?
Well, if they don't, I remove them.
Okay. Thank you.
But again...
Drunken disorderly.
They're not drunken disorderly if they leave when he asks them to.
Okay. But again, that's the difference, though, between public property and private property. To the best of my knowledge, the Elton Community Club never even requested permission to use the tennis courts for their licensed event. And there is actually a spot right on the license application asking if they had permission to use the facilities. So whoever signed that license application might have falsified the application in saying that they did because nobody made a request from this council to use those facilities.
Did Scott have to sign the license at all to approve it or anything? I don't know. I don't...
Yeah, so this is signed by law enforcement.
So Scott did sign it also?
I did.
Okay. So who's the president of the Elton Community Club? We all know. I just think that when the club asked him to remove the minors because the sign was posted after the community club, it asked one of their security people to have those minors leave and that person didn't want to make them leave. And then when they asked Scott to have him leave and he initially said no, is why I think it should stay in there. I realize he eventually did, which I'm glad that eventually he did have them leave. But I'm just saying, I think that part should stay. I agree, the top part was... I'm glad you were able to clear that up, that you were riding along and you know he was in contact with the security that was in the tent. So they had a way to contact him if they needed it.
Scott, can I ask a question? Scott?
Yeah, go ahead.
When you were asked to remove them, did you say no? And if so, why did you feel not at that time?
I don't remember verbatim my conversation with these two because the nameplate showed me they were yelling at me that they need to be removed. I made a few points with them and...
The kids were yelling at you or the...
They were speaking loudly towards me.
Not the kids.
Scott, she said were the kids speaking loudly at you?
No. No, it was the community club members.
Okay. I can't hear you. I can't see us. I can't even read your lips.
You're fine.
So...
So after I got done talking to them, probably not even two minutes, probably a minute, I removed the people.
But you do not recall if you initially told them no, you weren't going to remove them right away?
No, I don't remember saying it. I don't know if I did it.
I thought this wasn't a big issue.
I guess that's where I'm getting... this is where it's all different because I was told it's more than two minutes. I told this was told by several people who witnessed it that this went on for like 20, 25 minutes. So I guess this is where I am completely confused.
I don't believe it was 20, 25 minutes. It may have spanned the course of 10 minutes. It would be a stretch to say even 15. But I can't say for certain either. It wasn't...
I heard 10 minutes also, Jeff, from the people that spoke to me was about 10 minutes.
Okay, so can I ask this? Obviously, since there's so much discussion about this number 3, I'm not necessarily saying remove it. Is it possible to do a little more investigation into this? Because, I mean, there's all these different stories. I don't know. I mean, did you...
Randy, did you speak to the people who reportedly said Scott told them no initially?
Yes.
And they told you no?
And they said no. He said no, that their friends... Scott, are those people that had the children there, friends of yours?
Scott, did you hear that?
Their friends, mine and Jeff's, yep.
So you did speak to the two directly that asked them?
I talked to the one.
You talked to one only, okay.
I don't know if anybody else.
We drove across the street.
I guess they're saying, well, Scott, everybody...
They wanted to expand on it.
No, that... Thank you.
They were allowed in because Sunday at the tractor pole, for the last, I couldn't tell you how many years, families were able to go into the beer tent to get food, sit down and eat, drink, whatever, inside the beer tent. So I know there was a sign there, but a liquor license... for me, a liquor license is a liquor license. They wanted me to turn a blind eye to low families in down at the tractor pole to eat in the beer tent. I didn't see an issue with this family standing a foot in and three feet over and sitting at the gate, not doing anything. Didn't feel it was an issue.
Since you said brought up the past experience with Autumn Fest, have they ever let children in when it's posted no one under 21 on Saturday night or Friday night?
I worked that beer tent from the time I was a teenager until I turned 21, along with several others.
And last year, Queens... the Queens Court worked in the beer tent, too.
Yeah, they weren't supposed to be.
But they were still in there until they got kicked out.
Till they got kicked out, right.
But they were in there for well over an hour.
Right, and then they were kicked out because they were minors.
To be fair, they were kicked out because they didn't want me representing the Queens Court in the beer tent. They thought it was a bad image, not because it was against the law. It was perfectly legal and like...
It's not public... Sorry, it's not public comment.
So Jeff, I just wondered, have they let minors in Friday and Saturday nights in the past?
Well, I can't speak for this organization.
But I'm in other ones.
I can speak for past organizations. Agnes can back me up on this. Myself and several other teenagers were involved with the Elton Chamber of Commerce and the Autumn Fest weekends, and we did work. Again, typically, and again, Scott can confirm, we worked the gate. We were not serving behind the bar. We were not... we were the ones that, again, were taking the cover charge and putting them in.
But you never let... they never let minors into... listen to the music before?
I would guess probably not.
Okay. So I do know that in the past, on Sunday, they have let families in because of it being Sunday. And I did not realize it was... that they had the sign posted saying no one under 21 at the tractor... for during the Sunday tractor one.
I don't disagree that, again, their rules were such, they didn't want people under the age of 21 in their port choice on my part, maybe on Officer Jobs' part, to expect that they would, you know, bend that for that short period of time as though these people were there. However, I don't feel, again, that this rises to a disciplinary thing. These people were not even in past the entry point where money was being collected. They were between the gate and the tables that, you know, they weren't in...
Right.
...the entertainment, you know, tent area, so to speak.
So are you comfortable with removing the first paragraph of that number 3 and on the minor one, making that a verbal warning that in the future for Friday and Saturday night, if it says no one under 21, that it asks to please remove them?
I would support that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? My question is...
Yes.
So was the concern of these minors and how it was handled brought up by this council or outside this council?
Outside.
Outside.
So is outside individuals the community club or outside individuals? I mean...
I had somebody who was not a member of the community club who came up to me to discuss it.
So there was a concern and we're addressing the concern of the individuals?
Yes. Yes. And so... And I agree that we should, and I have already asked Phyllis to put on the calendar job for next July, that we, whoever is planning Autumn Fest, that they need to reserve and have it approved through the council for those activities because that should have been done.
Yes.
Because I also heard that that was not done.
Correct.
And so I already have it on our calendar for next year so that it's not overlooked again.
Perfect.
Yes. Our employees are always requested and it's part of their job to work with the community. The Autumn Fest was fantastic. I mean, I give big kudos to the community club and all the people that were involved. I was down there. We had fun. Our historical society had a wonderful turnout. The car show was fantastic. You know, I just don't want anything to reflect on this, but if the sign says no one under 21, we need to work with the club to keep it under 21, you know, over 21. That's all we're saying here. So you want to say make that a verbal?
I'm good with making that... I believe that's what it would be.
Yeah.
Just the last line would be a verbal?
On the first line.
That when... Because if he's asked, then if it's posted, then it should be on.
What's crossed off this is?
The first sentence in that paragraph. What are you crossing off?
The first paragraph from leaving to found because if he was in contact with somebody in the tent, then I feel that...
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree.
And as well as other pertinent responsibilities to handle.
Right. Oh, without a doubt. in the tent, then I feel that...
Yes, I agree.
And as well as other pertinent responsibilities to handle.
Right, oh, without a doubt. I have no, my concern was if he had time to drive by and not go in, but if he had somebody in there he was making contact with, which you're saying he was in constant contact with. So I'm taking you at your word that he was.
And we even followed up with him at the conclusion of the...
Yeah, so I have no issue with that at all.
So we're looking at making the first two a written warning?
Yes.
The one and two, and three is being changed to the verbal warning.
So I make, so I have to make a motion to, somebody should make a motion to amend it as is?
So we can give them an opportunity to defend numbers one and two?
Do you want to do that during discussion?
I think we, yeah.
We just go to discussion after we change it.
We're in discussion, correct.
Yep, they want to amend the motion and then...
Okay.
If you want to follow parlay pro, you have to vote on the amendment and then the amendment, then you, then you discuss the motion as amended. That's how you would...
I will resign the motion?
No.
No.
I make, I make a motion that we amend it to what was stated as a verbal warning for the last line in there and then removing the paragraph from leaving Autumn Fest who couldn't be found.
And the first two still being written?
Yeah, I'm just changing point three.
My second.
Any more discussion on that?
So then you have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
So now you can continue discussion on, you can continue discussion on the motion as amended.
So then Scott, would you like to take an opportunity to respond to bullet point number one, refusing to obey instructions?
Just one minute, Jeff, can I have a three minute recess please?
Yep, we're gonna take a short recess.
I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to argue, I just, I thought that I... Dan asked me, he looked at me and asked me if I was okay with it.
No, you said is Scott okay with...
Where's the meeting up? What's that saying?
I have the recording.
I just remember asking him something directed towards where if he was okay with, that's all, that's all I was asking, sorry.
So what does the signature line on that policy indicate though?
That he received it?
Just that you received it, not that you, not you, but it was presented to you?
Same as like the employee handbook, you have to sign that you were given out?
Correct.
Well, I guess I don't remember saying anything about working every weekend from, I thought it was every other weekend or two weekends a month or whatever.
We retracted all that.
I don't have my policy.
Phyllis has it on audio, so she'll have it.
We can't hear you. That's not our problem, we can only speak so. I can't speak any louder.
Hey, hold on, hey. If everybody in here could just be quieter, it would be a lot better.
Everybody's talking, so just quit.
Voice is down.
The question we're asking is, Scott made the comment that he was expected to work every weekend through the summer, and my question was, is I don't remember that, I remember it being two weekends a month, which is kind of what you go along with right now, right?
That's what it's been, but the way it's worded...
The way it's worded is, he is correct. It is during the summer months that there needs to be weekend coverage, which is up to his discretion, which days of the weekend, and to use part-time when possible, because we did have part-time funds available now, so he could use part-time to cover some of those weekends during the holiday. Whether Scott felt, which we discussed, whether Scott felt it should be Friday night when traffic's coming into the county, or whether it should be Sunday afternoon when people are leaving the county, but it was up to his discretion. It didn't say he had to work Friday, Saturday and Sunday. It just said weekend coverage during the summer months.
So he's not saying you got, he's got to work and we have five part-time hired employees to cover this, so somebody has to cover it.
Some, and it was just weekend coverage and it's up to his discretion what parts of the weekends he feels need covered. It did not specify Friday, Saturday and Sunday. It said for...
So if I have vacation schedule and I can't get no one to work the weekend, I can't take my vacation?
Unfortunately, when you live in Huron County, which is a very big tourist town, there's not a lot of people that can take...
We're not a tourist town.
We're a tourist county, I'm sorry, I misspoke. You're right, Scott, I meant a tourist county.
We always have weekend coverage.
A tourist county because we do have traffic that comes through and that was the reason why it was left in there.
We had weekend coverage.
Didn't we already go over, please? We did.
Correct. And he did state he was okay with it.
Yes. So basically, the signature was that you received it, not that he received it. That's what this whole signature thing is.
He's not signing that he received it because he doesn't approve it.
But this line just is that he received it.
So Scott, just so, just so I'm clear, the reason you did not sign is because you don't agree with the policy, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I, I mean, I guess if I'm looking at this, just a signature that says that you received it, if that's all they were requiring, I mean Scott, are you willing to sign it for that part of it?
I'll sign it, but I'll make a note that I don't agree.
That's sufficient in my mind.
I'm okay with that. I'm fine with that.
But I still would like to have a meeting to change it.
That's not a topic of discussion for tonight, but I think that can be...
No, I won't. We rehashed it, rehashed it, rehashed it and spent it all over.
But if the language needs to be cleared up to make it...
We did that. We just said this is it.
And at the council meeting when I passed, Dan did ask if you're good with it, we're done with it, we don't have to go over it anymore, and Scott did answer yes.
We have rehashed it to the point of it being nothing but dust.
Just reread it and make sure that there's...
No problem.
Okay, number two.
Number two.
You better read it, Dan, because nobody can hear us.
You hear me, Scott?
Yeah, I hear you.
All right. Engaging in behavior to create discord and harmony and, lack of harmony, sorry, and refusing to obey instructions and not provide updated schedule of part-time help and previous approved overtime to police committees. I think you know which weeks we're talking about. Do you want me to read the weeks or no?
What week?
Eight twenty-five and nine dash eight. After you, after previously providing schedule, the week beginning eight eleven to include part-time. So I'm assuming what that says, I guess, but I'm assuming that that says is the original schedule on eight eleven included part-time help during those days.
Should you be assuming what you're voting on?
That's why we're having a discussion, right?
That's why we're having a discussion.
Okay, thank you. That's why we're discussing. I, that's, we can't, you have to understand with open meetings, actually, we can't talk about this other than until we all get into a forum here. Okay? Thank you. All right. So is that...
I, I will address that then. At the police committee meeting, at the council meeting, I think, was the police committee, I, to be honest now, I'm confused, it was the police committee. It was asked, I asked Scott at the police committee to please update the schedule with the part-time help so that it was in the office, because it's only available in the office. Bridgette or Phyllis has it, and he sends a copy to the police committee, and he said that wasn't a problem to do that if he had part-time help covering stuff. So he did send it and then he didn't update with anything the following two weeks. So to me, that was like, okay, I'll do it, you asked, but then I did it one time, but I don't have to keep doing it. And so that was the, what that is referencing.
Okay, I would agree, you know, if you communicated with me, I didn't intentionally not do it. All you had to do is pick up the phone and call me and I would have actually corrected it. But I'm not exactly sure what...
But I don't know when you're, we don't, the police committee doesn't know when you have part-time unless you update the schedule.
Again, if I missed it, all you had to do is call me and I would have corrected it. I mean, I did put the two part-timers down for the eleventh or fourteenth and sixteenth, I believe, of August. And I also, I did not put this current week because that was the last minute.
Right, and you, right, you had said you would send an updated one if you had, if you were able to get part-time and update the schedule, because you have to submit your schedule two weeks in advance, and I realize sometimes you do get last minute part-time out, which is fine. And when you do that, you should just shoot the email to the police committee, which you told me you would do when you found part-time to cover things when you were off on vacation.
Again, it was the last minute thing, nobody wanted to work because, you know, and I care about the coverage of this town. And we, you know, to be honest with you, I don't feel comfortable talking about my work schedule here in front of everybody.
You have the option to go to a closed session though, so...
You're right. But if you want people to know my hours, then we can talk now.
I haven't talked about your hours, Scott. I agree with you 100%. You should not be telling the public your hours. I agree with you on that and I always have. It's just when I see, when I see you in another town and I come home and the Elkton patrol car is going down the street, it makes me just wonder because it's not on the schedule. And so if someone, I mean, I'm just saying, as a police committee member, it does make you wonder what just happened, is all I'm saying.
Please, please. Any more discussion on that?
No. To vote?
We already did.
No.
That was a vote to amend it. That was the discussion.
We have a vote to approve, right?
To accept it. Right, the vote to accept the written warnings.
As far as I understand.
Yeah.
We need to buy too much time and have to...
No, we just need to take a break. Because he made amendments.
There's no more discussion?
So, sorry, I do have a question. If we're going to change, if we're going to change from a written warning on the first two and a verbal warning, I, if I remember in the employee handbook how that goes, it's still just gets, goes into the personnel file, is that correct? Or is what happens with both of them? One is supposed to just carry more severity than the other, correct? Just for clarification for everybody? Okay.
On item number one, I would like to amend the motion to include if Officer Job signs that tonight or agrees to sign that tonight, that we would remove item number one.
I don't, I don't think we should because...
Because he should have done it before now.
It was sitting there and it's just like an employee handbook, and if he was, if he, after Dan, I know that he was asked if he was okay with it and he did answer yes. And so at the meeting after, on eight, 13...
Just tell you, there's motion there, no support, so.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm getting a motion, Randy, I don't even have a motion. The other one was the motion to amend, which we already voted on.
Okay.
Now I need a motion to approve the amended.
I make a motion to approve the amended write-ups as stated on our page.
Second.
Those in favor?
Rule call.
Give me a second.
Yes.
Gail Schumberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Agnes?
Yes.
Gail Brown?
Yes.
How can you vote without public comment?
Jeff, or Randy? Sorry. Okay, motion passes, six to one.
I respect the rules if you wanted to yell above everybody.
Okay. Public comment.
Yeah, I want to be first. Hold on. Okay, let me do it.
Okay, before, before we embark on the public comment portion of the meeting, I do want
to run through briefly here, guide to participation at council meetings adopted by the village of Elkton in December of 2016. Again, the village, the village council appreciate and encourage your participation and offer these rules. All village council meetings follow the order of business presented in the agenda, which we have done. Citizens may speak publicly during the public comment period as designated on the agenda, which is the point we're at now. All public comments should be framed to provide a point of view, gain valuable information or express a concern. When you are recognized by the village president, please step forward to the designated place to wait to be acknowledged by the president before you speak. Direct your comments to the village president and the council. You may state your name and address if you desire to be put on record. Comments may only be directed to the village president and the council. State your comments or concerns. It is not practice of council to respond directly to questions during public comment. Comments from speakers must be civil and respectful. Comments on physical appearance or character not related to job performance will not be tolerated. All speakers are expected to refrain from personal attacks on council members, village employees or other members of the audience. Infractions will result in the loss of remaining time by the order of the village president after one warning. Members of the audience are expected to respect the views of others and not interrupt or harass speakers. Persons not following this rule may be expelled from the building by order of the village president after one warning. Audience participation shall be, shall be set at the beginning of the agenda and at the end of the agenda at public comment. Each speaker may speak for a maximum of three minutes. Speakers may, this is interesting, speakers may choose to share, loan or borrow time.
Start the...
Each speaker may only speak during one of the public comment periods.
President, may I go first?
Yes, you may.
Okay, we did receive some written comments.
Okay.
The first one is from the Huron County Prosecuting Attorney's Office dated today to the Elkton Village Council. To whom it may concern, this letter is written in support of the retention of Scott Jobs as the chief of police for the village of Elkton. Chief Jobs is an asset to the community. He is a hard worker and always tries to be as fair as possible. When he is working on criminal investigations, he is thorough and will contact this office if necessary. Requests for further information are responded to promptly by Chief Jobs and he is nothing less than courteous and cooperative with my support staff. An officer's ultimate goal is to have voluntary compliance with the law from the members of the public being served. The officer must adhere to the law and be unwavering in its enforcement using his or her discretion on how to ultimately handle the matter and importantly, refrain from being swayed by public opinion, instead promoting and doing what is always right. Chief Jobs works to achieve that goal every day. Based on Chief Jobs' work, his professional demeanor and his ethics, this office supports his continued service as chief of Elkton. Sincerely, Tim Rakowski, Huron County Prosecuting Attorney; David Wallace, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney; Don Shoemaker, Chief Assistant Prosecuting Attorney; Suzanne Crone, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Yay!
The second letter received is from the Elkton Missionary Church dated today. Dear Village of Elkton Council, I am writing this letter on behalf of Elkton Missionary Church and its affirmation, commendation and full support of Chief Police Officer Scott Jobs. During my tenure at EMC, Chief Police Officer Jobs has shown kindness, compassion and a clear sense of duty as he watched over our facility during renovations, checking doors and assuring us that it was safe and secure, as well as rescuing my great nephew, who was a baby at the time from a locked car. He has demonstrated his character to me many times. Not knowing the full scope of what has transpired at recent council meetings or what may transpire this evening, I can, with strong conviction, state that the way in which this has come about is purely unethical, from the timing of these meetings to the swift turnaround of this meeting tonight. It may be legal, but it doesn't make it right. I would ask that you, as a council, take a step back and check motivations of the heart on this matter. I trust that you would produce documented written reports of incidents of Chief Police Officer Jobs performing his duties subpar or indirect ins, or indirect insubordination that would warrant his termination. I'm convinced that if there is a termination of employment of Chief, Chief Police Officer Jobs without cause, there will be fallout that will taint the good name of the village of Elkton. I for one do not want to see that happen. I am praying for clear minds and open hearts. Sincerely, Pastor Reggie Corliss, Elkton Missionary Church.
I received one from Deputy Ryan Schwartz of the Huron County Sheriff's Department. He said, "My name is Ryan Schwartz, I have worked for Chief Jobs in the village of Elkton as a police officer in the past. I would like to share my experiences as an Elkton police officer. I found Chief Jobs to be an honest chief who cares about his village. I have seen this firsthand in 17 years in law enforcement. It is also my understanding that a vote is set to take place tonight to terminate his employment. I feel if this happens, the village will suffer a tremendous loss. Please feel free to share my thoughts tonight, Ryan J. Schwartz." James, if you can record, state your name.
Jim Sealy, I'm with the Oliver Township Fire Department. I've been in this town my whole life, and it's pretty disappointing when you go to another town, like today I went to Pigeon, I went to Bad Axe. went to Pigeon, I went to Bad Axe. First thing you walk in the door, hey, what's going on in Elkton? Elkton's falling apart, what's going on? And my response was, this is a small village, like there's a lot of around here, and everybody should get along. If there's a problem or issue, sit down and handle it like grownups, and not like you got a personal ego to satisfy, and I'm not saying anybody does, but this could be settled at your police committee meeting. And another thing, a lot of you people probably don't even know, Autumn Fest weekend, Chief Jobbs come up to a guy that was inebriated, and could have harmed anybody, your kids, your grandkids, your people, yourself. Instead of that, he confronted him, he took him to the ground. And you people probably don't even know that. But he was protecting our community, and everybody at the Autumn Fest. And I think, is my, my time's not up yet? I think. Forgot where I was going. You guys, this is public comment. This, these are people that are backing Scott Jobbs right here. And if you guys are put on those seats right there to represent us, this is what we're saying to you. We need Scott Jobbs. Besides that, he wears a gun. He wears a gun every day, so he's definitely underpaid. He deserves a raise. Thank you.
My name is David Moran. I live over on Weber Street. I came to this council three years ago with an offer for you. I am a retired police officer. I teach criminal justice, and I offered you to go over policies with your committee for free, to go over and make sure we follow law. I was not taking up on that offer, and tonight this committee just violated civil service laws in Michigan, and also just told your chief of police, you have to enforce something you have no legal authority to enforce. So your policy, first of all, Chief Jobbs is a civil servant. Because he is a working chief, he is subject to the civil service rights in Michigan, and I heard tonight that he was not consulted on this or even asked about the allegations. That's a violation of civil service procedure. He has to actually have a right to defend himself, so you don't make a decision before you've heard both sides. The second, Ms. Schumberg asked a question, but never asked any of the officers in this room for an answer. If someone comes up to you and says, I want them removed, what is the process? Michigan has a trespass law, and the law says, a private entity, or entity run by a private organization, must take care of its own issues. So, they did not have a permit to run this beer tent. They didn't have the permit to run it where they did, correct? Then who has the legal authority to throw anybody out of it? Nobody. The chief of police does not have legal authority to throw somebody out of it. You posted a sign that says no one under twenty-one. Someone with legal authority by that organization must then go to those people and say, hey, this is our event, we are the lawful controllers of this event, and we are asking you to leave. If they don't leave, you may then go to the police and say, hey, I have a problem with these two gentlemen. I would like them to leave. This must be done in the police officer's presence. The police officer then, by statute, may tell the subjects, this is what's being asked of you. You have to leave. Give them an opportunity to leave. That opportunity is not a one or two-minute window, it could be a few minutes, depending on getting people out of an area. And then if they refuse, they can, at the officer's discretion, be arrested for trespass, or if they are making attempts to get out of there, and you're at a public event like this, you want them to make sure they leave appropriately. The next part you violated tonight is I've read, heard a whole lot of allegations, and I kept hearing the word, "I would like," or "I should be told." That's not a policy that you should be. If your policy says should be, you can't enforce it. So, should be is not a policy. Should be is a personal like. If you wanted the chief to sign a document, did that document have a return by date? Nobody asked that question here, but that's pretty important when you're going to write him up for not signing it, when you didn't give the date that it has to be signed by. You have not cited in this letter that you're going to write him up on a single policy or law. That also violates civil service rights. He has a right to know the policy you're citing. He has a right to know the law, and he has a right to defend it, and in situations where those things are not provided, you have just lost your entire write-up because he can fight it in the civil service court, go up to arbitration, the circuit court, it'll be dismissed because you failed to follow a simple, basic law of fact. My relationship with Chief Jobbs is professional. I'm the Walmart Asset Protection Manager, so anytime you have a crime here involving things such as embezzlement, where something's done in my store, I have to work with him. I'm not someone here that seek, day-to-day goes out and hangs out with him. I'm giving you a thing, because I also teach these things to new police officers. If you ask any of the deputies in the room about the law on trespass, they're going to tell you what I just told you. We can't enforce somebody's personal rule. We also have to have a person that is lawfully able to tell them to leave, tell them to leave. And what you have here is not a single thing, but I should have, I would like to, we don't want to talk about it now, more tonight. You haven't established a single element of what you would need to have any of these substantiated. So next we end up going to a court, we get the laughing stock, because this is going to be the media that you wrote somebody up for not doing the law. So, the question comes. You voted on something that you know the public has a very big objection to, without even hearing their input, so now you violated the law because you had an open meeting. This was an emergency meeting? How come I didn't get the phone call on my phone I get from Mr. Haley on every other village meeting, that says, this is the meeting we're going to have tonight, this is our good, because the Public Meetings Act says, you're going to notify us the same way on every meeting. That didn't happen tonight. You violated the Open Meetings Act. So.
We haven't used that system.
He's got Mr. Schumberg's time.
The mic, but you must follow your own rules. And this is the big problem we're having tonight, is I keep hearing this, I shall, I have yet, not one person has cited the policies that says he had to sign this by this date. It's not in there. Not one person has said, actually you said something earlier about, you talked to somebody this morning, so you bring stuff up that happened outside that eighteen-hour window for a public meeting, on a meeting. That's new information that was not available, that it should not be at this meeting, that would have been an adjournment of this to review those other things. You could have simply adjourned this, talked to Chief Jobbs when he wasn't on vacation, had a hearing. And when you're done, have you, after you've done an investigation, not what is basically a one-sided attempt to do this, you find out you had a whole lot of mitigated circumstances where you might actually, at this point, be able to lower this to a possible oral reprimand, or, hey, let's sign these documents, and let's read our own policies that don't follow the IACP, which is the International Association of Chiefs of Police Guidelines for Police Policies I offered to help you with three years ago. Thank you.
Just remember, you, you want some of your time.
Nope, I, I don't need a long time. Anthony Schumberg, I live on Twenty-Eight South Main Street. I don't mind handing out my information, come visit me anytime. I understand what your concerns are. I'm not going to even try to top that speech there. But I will say this. You volunteered to have this position. You're supposed to look out for the greater good of our town. This is not the unity we want. And lastly, not supposed to do a personal attack, but Gail, you and I are related, and I personally believe that this is a...
There's no personal attacks.
Okay, fine. How about this. When someone stands to gain from firing your chief of police because their spouse may be able to take that position, we'll be back here.
I would like to reassure everybody that my husband, who spent at the sheriff's department for over twenty-nine years, I'm allowed to respond to a public comment.
Council member is allowed to respond to a public comment.
Public comment!
Yes, they are. And he has been there twenty-nine years. He is due to retire in three years, two months, and he has no desire to leave his position.
We still on public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I'm an old-time citizen of this town, been here about sixteen-some years, and this is, I consider my town. I came here, and I've done good, and I hope that things can go in the way they have been. Now, this is a minor, a lot of people here, and I'm glad to see everybody come and find out what's going on in our town. A lot of people I don't know. I know the older ones, but not the younger ones. But nevertheless, they're citizens of Elkton, and they're welcome. Okay? Now, having said that, I just have one comment to make to the board. Years passed, I sat in your seat with the village of Elkton, as a member, okay? Having said that, we, at that time, had a person that got discharged from his job. He promptly went to a lawyer and sued the village of Elkton for what I consider a minor thing. And they consider this a minor thing, too, is lack of communication or something. You have a community that takes care of things. You should be able to use that more than you have. Okay? Now, even though we thought we won the case, it still cost the village over thirty thousand dollars after the lawyers.
Randy, you gotta recognize someone. There's a hand over there.
Terry Hack, Elkton, Michigan. Well, I sat here and listened to probably the... I sat here and listened to probably the biggest joke I ever seen in my whole life. A bunch of trumped-up charges against one of the best police officers we've ever had. And I said this at the last meeting, and I'll say it again. Randy Haley has had a vendetta against the police department forever. No, don't sit there and shake your head, Randy. When I met with you about the lumberyard, you made a comment, I'm going to take care of this police department, and I'm going to clean it out. You've had a vendetta forever, and you got a couple cronies here to side with you. And that's all you are, is cronies. And you're going to ruin Scott Jobbs' career and his life, because you think you're God? You're a joke, and I'm going to ask you one more time for your resignation. Step down. You have a whole town that wants you gone. So you're so arrogant, you think you can just stubble your nose at everybody in town?
That's enough, Terry.
What do you mean, that's enough? I don't, I don't have my three minutes yet. You don't want to hear what I have to say, I know that, because you're a joke. Are you going to resign or not?
No.
Why? You, you have no care what everybody in town thinks? You think you're better than them?
No, I don't.
No, you're not. You ain't even as good as the worst one in here. So, step down. I want your resignation. It ain't? Okay, people.
There you go.
Sign the recall petition outside. We'll get rid of this clown one way or the other.
I gotta say one more thing. I gotta say one more thing. I don't believe that anybody should come in this place and point at somebody and accuse them right in front of people. You got something against him, you take care of it. You don't point at somebody at an open meeting. Don't. That's not the right way to do it. That is not the right way to do it. I'm done.
Respect each other's opinion.
Comments are directed up here. Comments are not directed at people up there.
I'm Chrissy Lockston. I've been a resident here for over twenty years. I've been here for over twenty years. As most of you know, I wasn't always the good kid, teenager, always into trouble, and back then, I did dislike Officer Jobbs, only for the fact that I was young, stupid, immature, and didn't obey the rules. But he made sure I obeyed them, always did his job as an officer for this community. Moral of the story, he does his job, and he goes above and beyond, even when he's off of duty. As many of you should all know that. Now I'd like to know, who's in charge of fixing the lights that has been blown out for the past two months, right here by Clark Street?
Yes, we, and we can't get into that discussion, but if you stop...
But I want to know who's in charge of fixing things around town, because I sure, I know for a fact Scott's not the only one to, to do it. But he does go above and beyond and fix things in town here. He'll mow grass, he'll, you know, even when he's off of duty. But I want to know, who's in charge of fixing things in this township here?
Stop and see Lonnie Schultz, the superintendent. He'll notify Edison and get it taken care of.
Okay. And then I want to bring everybody to this attention, because this really bothered me. So someone, I'm not going to name no names, I mean, you guys don't like to name no names either, so, overheard a conversation between Gail Schumberg and Kim, and a third person at Kim's business. They were laughing about how they set Scott Jobbs up for something, and how they didn't, they don't care who knows. Gail Schumberg said, "I was laughing so hard, I had tears." Kim said, "He actually got out of his car Sunday night." So, one, they are watching him, and two, they are setting him up to get him in trouble. That's really immature and unprofessional, to be honest. So, nobody knows.
There was another village resident there, and I have no issue telling you what I, what I said there. It's not what I said. As I said at a meeting before, what that person overheard is I said that my stomach was upset, and when I get nervous and upset, whether I'm sad or happy, I laugh and I cry, and I was very worried that I was going to have tears running down my face tonight. And I did state that publicly before, because it did happen before, and that's what we were talking about, and then we proceeded to...
But that should not even be talked about. That's unprofessional.
How is it a professional to talk?
If you're gonna, okay, but listen, if you're, like, like today, Gail, you were in Clark Gas Station, were you not? And you're telling people in Clark Gas Station, oh, just go vote him out, go vote him out. He says, oh, well, we're not trying to fire him yet. We're not trying to fire him yet, but we're just sick of him. That's unprofessional, why?
It's not a personal attack, she's asking a question.
Okay. But you guys...
I will respond to the other part, because I was there, and I don't like people lying about what I said.
So if anybody's here, that was that third person, you should stand up and at least speak upon it.
It was discussing about what, that I, tears just come by, and I don't like it to happen. And I don't know what they heard that had the word Sunday and Scott in it, but I know they asked me, and I said, I do not know, they asked me about something, I said, I have no personal knowledge of it, and I'm not going to talk about anything that I don't have personal knowledge about. And I did tell, and that's a citizen of Elkton. I know Kim isn't, but the other person who there was. And then we proceeded to talk about our personal life, which I did, did not discuss anything about that.
I mean, none of that should be discussed at all, not even his personal life. I mean, not, like, the work, the work.
I know, and I won't, and I did say that. I agree with you a hundred percent.
But that's what's going on. I mean, you're going to sit here and lie to everybody, just like the last meeting, and you too. It's all lies. It's all lies. It's all lies, and it's embarrassing, and it's pathetic. It's very embarrassing. It's sad.
There's a, there's a couple of people in line over here, if, if anybody does want...
My name's Seth Randall. I live on the Nure Street. I kind of want to rebuke something Carrie said a bit earlier. He said that this meeting was the biggest joke. This was the second biggest joke. The first biggest joke was in July, when you guys accused Jobbs of being mentally unstable. So, what I'm... So, what I'm curious about is what is the general direction of this council? On that piece of paper right on that door, it says "employee termination." And you guys didn't even bring it up once. You guys gave him slaps on the wrist. You said, "Oh, we're gonna talk about, we're gonna give him, you know, a written write-up, we're gonna give him a verbal write-up." And you guys debated on what kind of write-up you were getting. Did you not get the right cards? Like, I'm confused. Why didn't you guys talk about termination at all? Which was supposed to be the point of this entire meeting and why all of us are here in support of Jobs. I mean, we, the people, elected you guys. Y'all are the representation of our votes. Y'all don't get to create things and do what you wanna do because you're a council member. And especially if you guys have the majority. Now, I don't wanna speak to the rest of the people here, but I think the majority is on Jobs' side. I'll give up my time for applause. It's my belief that we are all on the side of Jobs, and there's a couple council members that aren't. And so, it's my belief that if that is the case, then something needs to be done. So I've already talked to the county commissioner. I've already talked, and I've already talked about the different avenues that we can go about doing it. In January, we can start a recall, and we can have a vote for 2020 for people that were elected in 2018. And I am more than willing to do that if this continues to go on. I don't wanna wave that as a threat. I'm not flaunting anything. I'm just saying that the public is in support of Jobs, and the public will defend Jobs, no matter what your council does. And I promise you guys that if the public is on Jobs' side, the public is gonna win. Thank you.
My name's Chase Blackmer. I grew up here my whole life, from Mod Street down to McKinley Apartments, the Main Street, whatever, you get the point. I had like a whole speech right now, but I figured if I messed up, it couldn't be as messed up as this meeting I have tonight. Officer Jobs. Officer Jobs, how many times have you looked at me and shook your head at some of the stuff I've done in this town? Exactly. He shook his head, and he'd come up and talk to me. I now, I went from the troubled kid that he'd yell at, not yell at, but like shake his head at and just kinda be disapproved of. I went from that kid, and now I am a volunteer firefighter on three departments: Saginaw Township, James Township, and Cassidy on the weekends. I no longer live in Elkton. I live in Saginaw. But I remember being a little kid calling... Some of the people in this room remember this too. I called 911 to invite Officer Jobs to my birthday party. It was a little bit surprising when five county boys showed up and was just like, "I'm gonna go hide in the bathroom," and cried. The point is, you guys get rid of Jobs. You guys are getting rid of this town. Officer Jobs is the part of the reason why I'm at where I'm at today because he kept believing in me. He didn't, "Oh, you did this, okay, I'm gonna give you the tickets." You know, he gave me a lecture and pointed me in the right direction. You guys get rid of him. You guys are getting rid of possible doctors, EMTs, firefighters, whatever. He keeps people going strong in this town. And you guys need to realize. Are you guys saying we have one person telling us these things? Do you guys not believe in the law that says innocent until proven guilty in a court of law? Because that still kind of applies. She could tell me one thing, and I could only look inside and hear one other thing. You gotta put together stories. You can't take one side.
There's two sides to it, right?
That's all I gotta say.
Chris Hirsch? Wow. I don't know how I can follow up on anything that was just already said. But I do notice that there's a lot of people here. And I think everybody could speak to the character of Chief Jobs. And a lot of things were flying around on Facebook that, when I get there, I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna vote down, I'm gonna vote this. You already had your vote, and this is where it's at. So I guess at this point, if this is not what you want to see, is to carefully scrutinize the people that are going after these positions and use that vote to put the people in that will support you. And I think that's about all I can say on that.
My name is Tamera Felt House. I live in this community. I raise a small child in this community. And I'm appalled at the way that Officer Jobs is being treated. He is the one that is watching over our families. Would any of you like to do his job? Anybody? I didn't think so. Now, one more question to you is, why is he under such scrutiny? What about the rest of you? Have you never, ever faulted in your life? I mean, for crying out loud. You're nitpicking his every little move. It went down to, did he or did he not take a car to the mechanic? Now it's, did he or did he not sign a paper? Was he where he was supposed to be? Were any of you doing 100% perfection all the time in this position? Probably not. Can we just drop the nitpicking and let the man do his job? And help the community in the way that he's supposed to? I, for one, would like to continue raising my family in this town. And if Officer Job leaves, I can just imagine how many more are gonna follow. Thank you.
Here's Tara.
My name's Tara Pearl. I stood up here at the July meeting. Scott Jobs, I've known him my entire life. From 29 years old, I grew up with his children. And he sees my children grow up. My daughter is nine years old. Who do you think she thinks runs this town? She thinks it's Officer Jobs. Because when it comes down to it, he's the one that's down at summer rec, talking to the kids, playing kickball with the children. I can tell you right now, she looks at this council, even those who are with Scott, she don't know who you guys are. She knows Scott Jobs. And when she heard that you guys were going to terminate him, she was in tears. And she's nine. You gotta think about, they are our future. And he helps mold them, and you guys are trying to get rid of somebody that is good for our children. You guys wanna make a difference in this town. Kicking him out is not a positive one. And I can tell you right now that there is no situation that he has ever done I wanna be in. You guys wanna go and tell somebody that their loved one died? Or watch something like that happen? Because I can tell you right now, none of you guys have balls to do that. None of you. He was going to tell my three-year-old and my nine-year-old their dad died. I did it, but he was going to. He stood there as I tried to gather myself, gave me a hug, and then told me to go inside, go into the bathroom or something so my girls couldn't see me, went to my mother's house, she was in bed, went to my brother's house, got him, sat in the parking lot, and made sure that they came to me so I wasn't alone. I don't know if a lot of officers do that, but I couldn't ask for anybody else to have done that to my family. I know he's done that for other people in my family. But I know there are certain people on this council that have made my family's life hell growing up. I won't name names, but there's a certain neighbor. I'm sorry, but my dad had stents in his heart. He had heart surgery done. And this neighbor complained that these weeds in a ditch, two acres back, that nobody could see, the weeds were getting too high. And he was getting rabbits in his yard from the ditch. So my dad, fresh out of heart surgery, is out there picking weeds. So, this is a person who has a mission to make somebody's life hell. And my dad has passed away. It'll be 15 years. So now he's moved on to somebody new. And it's his mission to just get pleasure out of all of people's pain. And I don't understand it. I mean, be a role model. Be a role model to my children, to these children, to everybody's children. Show up. I mean, you guys kicked Kurt Darrow out of town. I mean, I don't know who did that, but somebody told Kurt they didn't wanna see him in Elkton anymore. Kurt has done so much for this town. And that's ridiculous. I mean, he moved out of this town, and he's still doing things for Elkton. So you guys need to grow up at your age because I'm 29, and I think that I'm more mature than some of you.
I think I'll just say one thing on that one. I appreciate your comment, but any of us know that Kurt Darrow, if Kurt didn't wanna leave, there is nobody in this room, in this town, could make him leave if he didn't wanna leave.
You guys make him feel just loved.
And I don't think that happens.
He thinks he's out of his own pockets for stuff in this community.
Nobody has said that.
Thank you. My name is Phillip Crown, and I don't know how many of you know me or not. I'm fairly new to this town. I've only lived here actually three and a half years. I come from Metro Detroit area, which is a much larger population than we have here. And I chose to move to this town to give my daughter a better quality of life. Okay? I went to a high school, my graduating class was 917. Okay? My daughter's graduating class will be maybe 72. She's in fifth grade at Laker Elementary. When I thought, where do I want to live? One of the determinants factors is where my wife's family is. She's here in the, just north of the Elkton city limits. And we chose to come over here to be with family. And when you think of small-town America, you think of Mayberry. And you think how everyone's friendly and everyone's jolly. Guess what? This town is not friendly to new people. You're very, you're very hard on us. And as an outsider, I will never be accepted. Luckily, my daughter got here in preschool, so she's been accepted. Everyone thinks of her as a local, even though I am not, and I will not be. But certain people, and I'm just gonna say shame on all of us in this town for not being able to get together and be on one page. The council versus the police department, the police department versus the council. That shouldn't be. Everyone should be able to get along in harmony and not just be at each other's heads all the time. We need to work together as one collective group. Otherwise, this town's got no future. Thank you.
Do you want a recess? Gail needs a recess.
Hi, my name is Haley McCardle, and I have been a part of this town since I was born. And I would like to tell everyone here that I am honestly embarrassed. I am embarrassed. I have loved this town since the day I've been born. I'm embarrassed. Because the place where I felt safe is all coming apart. We've had all these ceremonies and outings, and we closed Main Street to do all these amazing things. And I work with all the kids. Because I love this town, and I love everyone in it. But your plan is to get rid of one of the most important and vital parts of this town. I barely know any of you sitting up here. So I have nothing against any of you or anybody here. But I would like to say that I am embarrassed that we have made our town known on social media platforms because we are completely going against an important, vital piece of our town. And that is embarrassing. I believe in every single one of us here. Our community is falling apart, and I am literally watching it. And it's not fair to any of us, to the younger generations of this town that they might never know Sheriff Jobs. I personally have never met him or talked to him. But since I've been born, I feel safe in this town because I know absolutely everybody. And I know Jobs, even though I have never talked to him in my life. But I feel safe when I am around him because he has protected me in the time that I've been here. So all I really wanted to say today is that I have been embarrassed that the whole world knows about our town because we were trying to tear apart one of the most important people in our town. And that's embarrassing. And I hope everyone knows this. Nobody gets together for Autumn Fest. Autumn Fest, the thing we're supposed to be popular for. Nobody. It's always the queens that help, or Kurt, that always work there, are always there to help everybody. But I'm gonna be honest. I don't see anybody else. Nobody else supporting our town like Kurt does or Jobs does. Nobody supports our town. And that's what I believe that our council needs to do. They need to support our town.
Hi there. My name is Paige Murphy. I moved to this town when I was a year old. My parents are not from here. But I have lived on York Street my entire life. When I was nine years old, I had a pretty awful rollerblading accident. They thought I broke my back. And little Ben Golda, I don't know if you guys ever know him, he's Renee's son, freaked out. He ran and got help, and they called the cops. And Scott Jobs was the first man that was there. And I was sobbing, and I was scared. And he held my hand, and he told me it was gonna be okay. And he was there for me. I'm 26 years old today. I live in Saginaw now. I came home from Saginaw today to be here for this man because he was there for me as a kid. Today, I'm an EMT. You know, he set a standard as a kid that you could help people and be there for them when they're in trouble. And I'm sorry that you guys are having to go through this. Scott Jobs is a great man, and I felt like I had to be here today. My whole family had to be here today to tell everyone in this room that he deserves this position. He's earned it. He's worked for it. There are 14 weekends between Memorial Day and Labor Day. I know that I haven't worked all of those weekends. He shouldn't have to either, especially being the only one on duty. That is not fair to any professional working man. That is all I have to say.
No other comments?
I'm Greg Hartzell. I'm relatively new to the community. I'm from Deccaville originally, but I moved here a couple years ago. I don't know a lot about y'all's procedures and everything when it comes to all this, but I do know that Officer Jobs is the face of this community. He takes care of everybody here. He's always looking after everybody. The employees of the businesses around here feel safe with him on duty. There is no reason for him to have to work every single weekend. I don't understand why the other officer we had was forced out of here and made him have to do this. It's absolutely ridiculous. And I'm appalled at the city council for making this a reality. Thank you.
Can the people in the back here? We're doing last call for public comment.